Good evening and welcome. I'm going to call to order the Burnsville Planning Commission for Monday, January 14th. Thank you to everyone who's joined us here today. Council members, thank you. First, first planning commission of the new year. So we've got a busy agenda this evening. Our first item is approval of the agenda. Staff, any additions to what we have before us?
None from staff.
None from staff. Any from council commissioners? Sorry, I was just...I would entertain a motion. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second is approval of the minutes of the December 10th Planning Commission meeting. Any changes from staff or commissioners?
None from staff.
None from staff?
None.
None from commissioners. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move. Second.
It's been moved. And second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
In attendance.
Commissioner Benke abstaining. Okay. That moves us on to item three, which is a public hearing for Dar U Salam for our conditional use permit amendment to allow off-site leased parking for the property located at 190 River Ridge Circle South. Ms. Garros.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission and everybody who has come out tonight for this. The application before you is a proposal by Dar U Salam to amend their conditional use permit that they received approval of last year in May. And the only question that is being considered tonight is one of the conditions of that May 8th approval cited in the conditional use permit was item D, which is highlighted above, and that is the site plan may be revised to provide all required parking on the subject site, or a properly drawn legal instrument for the joint use of up to 70 spaces shall be filed at Dakota County as a deed restriction on all the affected properties, and then written evidence of this be provided to the city. That is the only question that's before Planning Commission this evening. The subject site is located at 190 River Ridge Circle. It's shown in hatched on the site plan and on the pictometry in red. The applicant owns two lots, and they are in the process of combining those lots. As far as the subject site, again Dar U Salam has the property on the right-hand part of the screen. Better Business Bureau is on the left and abuts the subject site, and the applicant is requesting approval to be able to use a lease as opposed to a recorded document. And the lease that they have obtained is included in your background report, and that is Better Business Bureau is willing to allow them to use part of the parking lot, that area generally in yellow, for their excess parking, and allows them to use up to 70 stalls. The applicant has submitted a revised site plan and revised building plans, and the amount of parking that is required based on the zoning ordinance schedule is 124 parking spaces. That is less than what was discussed on May 8th. The reason for that is because the occupancy of the building has changed. The occupancy at May 8th had other tenants that were in the space, and the only tenant will be Dar U Salam. So the total required parking based on the ordinance is 124 spaces. What Dar U Salam would like to do is the current site has room for 71 spaces. There are 71 spaces that are constructed on site, and they would like to do proof of parking for two areas on the property, one to the south, which would be a future 27 lot, excuse me, 27 stall parking area, and then to the north, 33 stall parking area for proof of parking. In order to utilize proof of parking, there are some standards that the ordinance requires, and one of those items has not been provided at this point in time. The site plan that was provided, the parking that is shown, the parking lots, do not meet the 10-foot setback requirement from the north, east, and south property lines. We do believe that the plan can be modified, and they can still provide the required amount of parking, but at this point in time, we don't have a document that shows that. The site plan, as I said, has been modified, and they're showing the building plans. The site currently can be used for permitted uses. They can have schools there. Schools are permitted use. They have office space in the building. That's a permitted use, so those can be operating at the building. The only thing that is not operating yet and is waiting for action on this application is the religious assembly component. The applicant is currently, they continue to lease a site at 603 Travelers Trail. This is where they have held their services for a few years, and they have not provided or started to have services at this site because they're pending this particular application to be able to move in and start that. In the application, or in the staff report, we have indicated the requirements, and I just discussed the 10-foot parking area. We did receive some comments from two individuals, Kurt Ennisfett and also, excuse me, Paul Gonya, and those are the only comments that we have received. So their comments are summarized in the report for you. We did identify for both that it is best to come to the meeting or provide written documentation rather than just information provided by staff, but this is a summary of what we were advised by both individuals. The subject site is in the city's drinking water overlay protection zone. There are no changes proposed to the building or site other than what we've discussed. In terms of engineering considerations, as long as the conditions remain as approved in May 8th, the, the engineering department is, they are okay with the application as proposed. We have had indications from the police and fire department that there have been instances over the past several months where along the south part of River Ridge Circle South, there has been some parking congestion. Sometimes that has occurred during the week. That is information similar to what the two individuals have told us. What we have found is that their Skateville has held at least one and maybe additional events, and that the parking that has occurred on River Ridge Circle is associated with those events. It is not associated with this applicant. When the applicant, after they received their approval in May, they did go to Better Business Bureau and requested that they enter into a deed restriction, and the Better Business Bureau did not want to have their property restricted in such a way, but they said that they were interested in allowing them to lease property, and so a lease has been provided to you. This is a situation that is not covered specifically by the ordinance. The ordinance calls for a recorded deed restriction, and the lease is something that the city attorney took a look at and said that it is possible to provide a lease, to allow a lease, but in order to do that, the city council has to make that decision, and they would need to modify the conditional use permit accordingly. So that is what is being From a staff perspective, staff is recommending that the ordinance be followed. We have similar applications, a couple of them which were approved last year, also for assembly, religious assembly uses, where deed restrictions have been recorded. That has worked well in the past, and staff is recommending that the ordinance be followed as written. If Planning Commission and council think that the lease option is something that is workable, they certainly have the opportunity to make those recommendations, and if so, staff is recommending nine conditions. These have been reviewed with the applicant, and the applicant has agreed to these conditions, and I'll just identify them shortly for you. The conditions of the previously approved CUP remain all in effect except for item D, which is this lease. Two, the property owner, which will be Dar U Salam right now, but this will be filed with the property. Property owner must notify the city immediately if, at any point in time, the lease is terminated, expires, or there's a default. The driveways on the subject site shall be posted with signs indicating one for entrance and one for exit. This is something the applicant has proposed to do to help channel traffic. This is something that was done at Bahrain Baptist Church, the same type of situation to help move traffic through. We also identify item four, that proof of parking shall be installed within 180 days of expiration or termination or default of the lease, if there are no other options available to meet the ordinance. Number five, proof of parking shall meet all provisions of the zoning ordinance in effect at the time, and at this point in time, we just know that the 10-foot setback needs to be modified in order to do that. The applicant has also agreed not to lease out excess space within the facility unless they can provide the required parking for that. Initially, and back in May, they had indicated that they did have some folks that may be interested in moving into the building, but with the occupancy as provided in their plans and the parking, they do not have excess parking at this point in time. That's why that condition is recommended. The applicant also agrees to allow the CUP to be reviewed in two years. With this option, this is not an option to open the conditional use permit for evaluation. This is merely to go back and identify, yes, are the conditions of the conditional use permit, are they met or not, and then to report that information to Planning Commission and council. The fire department and police department have indicated that they have concerns about parking, mostly because River Ridge Circle is a narrower right-of-way and street than the adjacent properties, or excuse me, the adjacent streets. One of the streets, one of the main streets that access the area, I guess I don't have it on here, it would be actually further to the east that connects to Nicollet Avenue. That's got a wider right-of-way and is posted on both sides for no parking. They have asked the city engineer to take a look at the site. What the engineer needs to do is they would need to do an analysis to determine if there is a need to post one or both sides no parking, but until that analysis is done, it's not known if that's, if it meets the requirements for that. In addition to the subject site, there is one vacant lot left out here to the west that also will be developed at some point in time. So all of those considerations go into parking. And the last one is that if the applicant can provide information on providing transit or access the site, bringing people via van pools, et cetera, to the site, that that would be allowed to be approved by staff at some future time, and they would not need to come back for another amendment to the conditional use permit. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. I think of this commission, two of us were here when this was originally before us in, in May, so we've got three, three new members here, but just to clarify what you'd said in the beginning, this is, the application is simply the one item to change the deed restriction to a leasing option, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not, we're not reopening the entire thing that was discussed back in, in May?
Correct. The use, the religious assembly use is allowed, and we're not looking at any of those issues. It's merely lease versus deed restriction.
And one que, I'll, I'll start with questions. The, when I was reading the background material, I got the impression, particularly from the two individuals that were mentioned in there, that there were some kind of large-scale events that were crowding the streets there. But from your description, it sounds like that was an unrelated thing that might be affiliated with Skateville? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes. They, we have also received a complaint that was investigated, and they found that there was an event that was held at Skateville. It was not something associated with this applicant or with Dar U Salam, and there was congestion. We have received a lot of pictures that, you know, there was indeed, you know, a lot of folks trying to get in and out in that general vicinity on South River Ridge Circle, but not associated with the applicant.
And a, and a one-time incident? Because every time I've driven by there, there's not been any, anybody parked on the street. It might just be at the wrong times, or?
We have had indications from, from a few different individuals, and they would be weekdays were all of the events, not on weekends, but weekdays during business hours.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Garros? Commissioner Benke?
Yeah, I'm curious. With all of the joint parking agreements that we have, are, are all of them in the city handled as deed restrictions in the past?
Deed restrictions or easements. We've allowed easements to be recorded as well.
Okay. And you mentioned that the signed lease was in the background, but I didn't see it when I scrolled back through.
I apologize. It should have been included.
Yeah, I, I was just curious, because you mentioned default, and then, you know, I didn't see what, there's no way to know what those events could be.
Basically, the, the way that the lease is structured is that it's a lease that is renewed annually unless it's terminated by either party, and there is a standard default provision in there. And once either party decides or wants to terminate the lease, then the applicant or property owner needs to contact the city, and then they have 30 days in the lease before they need to stop the parking on the site, or, excuse me, 90 days.
And the, the 180-day limit, it's in the recommendation, if it's
Yes.
approved, that is from the actual termination of the lease?
Staff is recommending a minimum of 180 days because if the lease should be terminated some point in the late fall, you have asphalt plants that close down over the winter, and you just physically cannot construct over the winter. So that's why we would actually like to see a year, but at minimum a six-month.
Well, I, I think what I'm getting at is it's, it's the 180 days plus the 30 days because as soon as they would want to terminate a contract, you'd have that 30 days plus the additional 180 after the contract actually terminated.
That would be correct.
So they, they would have a significant amount of time to try to generate a different parking solution?
Yes, correct.
Okay. That's for, that'd be for the owner. That's for the owner. I think the balance of my questions probably are more appropriate for a representative.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Timmerman?
Ms. Garros, the question I have is about the precedent. You spoke to this a little bit. With the recent projects that we had where a deed was recorded as the ordinance requires, was there a request for leased parking, or was it directly taken to that action?
This is the first time that leased parking has been requested.
Okay. And then the other question I have is regarding some of the information in the background about van pool and off-site parking. Has there been any discussion with the applicant about that as an option?
Yes, there has, and they had indicated that they knew of other locations in other cities that did this. We had asked them to provide the information. They didn't at this point in time, but said that they could do that in the future.
Okay. I'll save follow-up questions for them. Thank you.
Additional questions for Ms. Garros, commissioners? All right. Do we want to, we'll hear from the applicant. I've got questions for him. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jay Sombelski. I'm an attorney for the applicant. St. Paul, sorry, sign in. Is that something that's, that I should do?
Yep. If you could just identify your, yourself and your address for the record.
Sure. The, the law firm, Ferdinand F. Pierce Law Firm, 842 Raymond Avenue, St. Paul, 55114.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, and Q. Murson, the director for the organization, address 125, 12625 Glenbrook Way, Upper Valley, Minnesota, 55124.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benke, did you want to start off with?
No, I probably can follow up.
Okay. Commissioner Timmerman?
Thank you. So I'll address the same question to you. What type of negotiations or research have you done into off-site parking that would allow transportation to the site? I'll leave it at that with my first question, and then I'll ask you a few follow-up questions.
So for the off-site parking, our agreement with the Better Business should be sufficient for now. We don't foresee any issues, and it's 125, 124 parking spaces that we need. Out of that 71 that we have on site already, and 70, we have the agreement with the Better Business. So that's 140, which exceeds the maximum amount of parking that we need. And in the future, we do plan on having our own parking space, too. So that will suffice any need. The, the, the off-site parking is referring to the Better Business, but there's a, there was a recommendation about a backup, a backup plan, which would trigger than any other off-site parking solutions.
So at this point, you're looking at the Better Business Bureau, and if you're not successful with that, then you would look further into van options and?
We are successful with it. We have the agreement, and, and we have a signed copy of the executed agreement to the city, and I think it's in the background information, too.
I'm sorry. I mean, with approval with, with the commission, with the city council, I guess my question is specifically, have you, at this point, looked into backup alternatives if the council does not move forward with this request?
Yes. We also had talks with Skateville, which is also another neighbor, and they, they are willing to share parking with us, and they, they have made that verbal agreement with us. Initially, they didn't want to get into the deed restriction as well, but they have expressed interest in, in sharing parking with us.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Commissioner Benke?
Yeah, I think I will. I think I will. Sir, just, just, can you give me a little bit of background? I mean, when you, in the background, it talks about the size of some of your events, and it talks a little bit about how you plan on splitting the number of attendees at the services. Service, the service, Friday service being your largest event?
Right.
Is that correct? And if you're splitting it, do you have a way of encouraging the congregants to balance it out, or are most going to go to one, and, and the other one is only going to have a few?
First, some concerns with the information provided in the background is that currently, as the staff stated, that we're not using the facility at all, and no event has occurred at the facility. Some, in the background information, it might suggest that we have used it, or there might have been congestion. That has to be validated or verified because we haven't used it at all. But back to your question, yes, at all of the other mosques that are in, around the Twin Cities, they do the two services for convenience purposes because some people take their lunch breaks at 12 o'clock, some people take it at 1:00. And it's for the convenience of the people, actually. It's not for our convenience. And we, we receive those requests oftentimes right now. It, that's something that we will do even before we move or after we move. So to balance it, it's, it will be well balanced, and it will be in different languages, and it will, we'll make sure that it's well balanced.
One of the things that wasn't, didn't seem to have a number in here was what you saw a, a service occupancy number could be. I did see some stuff about some of the other, I mean, the building obviously has an occupancy limit, and
Right.
do you see your current, your current events as approaching that number?
Not, not even close. Nothing close to that. Because the occupancy, I believe, was going to be 500 something
Okay.
for the building. But our maximum occupancy right now is at 150, less than 200. So it's not, it won't be anywhere close to the maximum. And the maximum occupancy for the building is for the entire building, all three levels
Right.
ever, office, ever, assembly area. So, and the other issue is that when we're using the building, and we have clarified this with staff and management and council members, is when there's service going on, there's nothing else going on in the rest of the building. If there's a classroom going on, if there's someone in an office, everyone is going to come to the service.
Sure.
So those people should not be counted twice for parking issues. Because what, what the ordinance says that is you, you need parking for the assembly area and parking for the office and the classroom areas.
Right.
But it's going to be the same people. So to count the same people twice and to require double the amount of parking would be an overlap or redundant.
Yeah, unfortunately, the building code and the ordinance don't address that individual item, but I don't think that the amount of that is going to be a huge.
If I could just make one note on that, I think it's important to note that in addition to the parking lease being one of the requested modifications here, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that in this new application, the new, the request for modification also was accompanied by a reduction in the total amount of the prayer area, so it won't hold as many people.
Right. Are you, are you prepared to have your consultant create a proof of parking map that meets the variance, the...
Yes, yes, we have the proof. We put a lot of it into engineering and design, and they're willing to work with our city staff, but we told them that let's work with us first, and then we'll go to, and a lot of them, or the firm that we're working with, were not familiar with the ordinances of Burnsville. So they are willing to work with city staff.
Okay. Oh, I know that, I, I've heard just from other applications that, does your mosque, does your cultural center, does it have funerals? I was under the impression that funerals happened at only another spot in the metro area.
Right, that was another concern that was raised in the background information. And we do have a number of concerns in there. That's one of them. And we have discussed with the city staff, council members, management, including the mayor, that there's only one entity or institution that can do funerals in the entire Twin Cities Muslim community. And we're not affiliated with that one entity. And there is, there hasn't been any funerals done, and on the complaint, it says that there was a funeral or done on there. So we have no intentions, we have made that clear from the beginning, that we have no intentions to do funerals, we have no intentions to do anything. We're not equipped to do funerals or body burials or burial proceedings. That's not something that we're, and yes, there is only one entity that's supposed, that can do that in the Twin Cities.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions for the applicants?
I have one follow-up.
Commissioner Timmerman.
So looking at the background, you, you saw what the staff's recommendations were, correct?
Right.
If we were to approve this request for leasing parking from the Better Business Bureau, would you be willing to accept the nine conditions that are outlined in the background?
Yes, those, we've already accepted those conditions, and those are some of the conditions were from us, generated from us or proposed by us. And it's been since April or May that we've been, the last commission was, meeting, commission meeting was in April, thirtieth, I think. And we've been on this since then, so we have to and we need to abide by those conditions.
And if I could make one comment on that note, I think everybody's been thinking this, but I just want to say it out loud, that those conditions, those nine conditions, are because of that lease requirement. So in other words, if we swapped out and went to the, to the deed or the easement restriction, we would accomplish the same thing without those nine conditions.
That's a good point, thank you. Additional questions? All right, thank you very much.
Commissioner Wood, I just have one last comment. In the, in the report, there are some issues raised of congestion, and I think we've all recognized that that's not caused by the applicant, and I, I know it's Q.'s personal experience that every time he's driving, you know, there's not really any congestion on that road. And at the same time, I just direct the commission's attention, you know, it's in the, it should be in the records if you wanted to review it, there's a, in the original application for the conditional use permit, there was a traffic study, or I'm sorry, a parking review and circulation review that was completed by Bolton and Mink, and they didn't recognize any issues with congestion, and they, they thought that circulation was adequate for the proposed uses. And that was with the larger capacity, and so now that it's reduced, I would, I think that that, so if you go back and you look at that review, you will see some discrepancies because the parking requirements are different now that the use is, the requested use is less intense, but the conclusions are, for that reason, are even more applicable.
Thank you.
And, sorry, if I may also add, there are some information in the background, I think some of it has been taken care of, but it says, I think, close to the last page, that staff continues to have concerns about parking that is currently occurring, and the religious assembly use not moved in yet. So we would like to know what that parking issue is that, that is currently occurring because there is no parking occurring at all. And sometimes I'm the only one parked there on the weekdays. So I don't know where that is referring to. And there's another concern here is that it says, the staff has offered alternatives to the applicant to help finance and potentially construct the parking and assess the costs back. This option is not desired by the applicant due to religious beliefs. That is also not accurate because the assessment that we, the city was offering or proposing was that, in addition to the total cost, there would be about a twenty-eight percent admin fee, and in addition to that, there would be three point four percent, if I am right, three point four percent interest fee. That is thirty percent, more than thirty percent in interest and fees. So that is not a loan or any assessment that anyone would rush into. And because of that, we didn't want to rush into that. And the parking, the, the code that we were getting for parking was over a million, over half a million dollars. So if you add thirty percent to that, that would be ongoing. That was not something that we were interested in, and that's the reason, not because of other reasons. And going forward, if these claims by the individuals are, they're not neighbors, but the individuals in here, if those claims are not substantiated or verified or validated, if they could be addressed or taken care of or removed, that would be considerate, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Do we have additional questions for Ms. Garros before we open the public hearing? Okay, we will open the public hearing then at seven oh four P. M. Do we have a list, or are we just calling people up? One moment, we're going to check who's signed in. We might as well get started, though, if there's, if there's anyone who'd like to speak on this particular issue, feel free to come forward and identify yourself for the record. Sir, welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Kurt Anistvett. I live at eight fifty Blueville Bay Road in Burnsville. I own the building at two hundred West Highway thirteen. And I am one of those who has complained over the years, and I am one of those who has seen the parking congestion. And it has to do with when there's a funeral held at the Burnsville cemeteries, and they direct traffic in there by the hundreds of cars, and they block up those streets completely. They even have people in the streets directing the traffic. So you have to look at that, and if these people don't do the funerals, someone is doing the funeral, and they are directing the people into there. And they park both sides of that curved street, and you cannot get a police or a fire truck through there. So that is a big issue that, of our concerns as building owners there. And so I am very concerned, and that Better Business Bureau building will be sold someday, and without a deed restriction on there, then what's going to happen? You know, we're going to have the same issue all over again. But like I say, I'm not necessarily concerned about the activity on a daily basis there, but I am concerned when a big funeral occurs, and they walk down then along Highway thirteen, and they actually park on the other side of thirteen and walk across Highway thirteen. It's very, very dangerous. So without an additional place to park, and they park in my lot, they, they park in Pawn America's lot, and they park in Grand Slam's lot, and they park in Antique Minnesota's lot. And I understand their culture is different than my culture, and I, I respect that. But generally, when we have businesses, we have to respect the ability of those businesses to have enough parking spaces, which are required by you guys, to have the businesses located there, and people come into those businesses and use those businesses. And I've been there since nineteen eighty-six, and I've seen a lot of changes, but I would request that you not allow this to happen, you know, or at least you restrict on the funeral days the amount of parking that they can have there. If you can do that, I'm happy. But on those funeral days, five hundred, eight hundred, thousand cars roll in there and nothing to it. And they all walk across all the way over there. So please be considerate of the rest of the businesses who are paying taxes in those areas, because we're the ones supporting this community and have for years and years and years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do have a list now. Next is Patricia Jertie. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. My address is forty-six East one twenty-fifth Street, and my husband and I are former owners of the building in question. And I have to say that since nineteen ninety-four, when we opened, we had many, many events at our building. One that happened with the city of Burnsville was actually the Canvas and Vines event, which joined with us in the Burnsville chamber, and parking was all around the building, on both sides of the street, up and down, even River Ridge Boulevard. And I quite vividly remember that we had both police and ambulances come to the building with no problems whatsoever when we had any, any physical ailments in, in people coming. The mayor actually stood at the front door and looked at her watch to see how quickly they got there, and they got there in very good time, no problem. In the years since, when we've not been doing the art school, I've observed on just a couple of occasions, the Skateville event thing, but that has nothing to do with Dara Salam, nothing. And so I would ask that you consider if, if some regulations need to be made, perhaps it's with Skateville, because they are the one, only ones that are causing a problem. But to my eye, since we didn't cause a problem with our art events, and we were parking on both sides of the street, I don't really see that it's fair now to say, when it was proven that the fire trucks came through and ambulance came through and everything, there was no problem. So I don't see that there's an issue. About the funerals, well, we've already heard Mr. Mursal say that they don't have anything to do with any funerals, and I know that the one that happened that Kurt might be referring to was a big Twin City event, the, the two young women who were drowned in the pond, and, you know, hit the news all over the Twin Cities, that funeral that happened over on, at the cemetery, but not, you know, we're pretty far from, from the cemetery, so I didn't notice that we had any, any problems during that time. So I did check with one of the biggest tenants in the building, who has now left, at, at Mr. Mursal's request. It was Helen Peterson, who has Kinder Music and the River School of Music, and she has already moved out happily to a place that's two miles away, and when I talked to her today, she said she never had any problems at all with parking for any of her businesses there, that Dara Salam has been nothing but wonderful and respectful and, and very, very careful. So I think I could only hope that, that you will, will go forward and, and permit this because I can't see, in looking at previous events, that there's any reason not to.
Thank you. Next, we have Ellen Longfellow. Welcome.
I'm Ellen Longfellow. I'm a civil rights attorney with the Council on American Islamic Relations, Minnesota Chapter, and I just want to remind the council, which I think you're doing a good job in terms of the questions that you're asking, in terms of the Religious Land Use and Institution Persons Act, makes sure that religious uses have to be treated as non-religious uses are equally, and then clearly there can't be discrimination in terms of the amount of process that is required of different religions. So I think you are asking some of the same, interesting questions, and what's been done before in terms of parking issues and other things like that, and we hope that you treat this applicant as fairly as you can in terms of the other things, because we certainly have seen many other cities that have not done so, and we certainly are not accusing Burnsville of doing that. We're hoping that it will be a fair and equal process for them, and it seems like they have done what the city has suggested in terms of trying to resolve the parking issues, and it seems like it's a reasonable plan to do so, and we hope that you'll pass it.
Thank you. Next is Susan Ven, Venom. Welcome. Did I get your name right?
It's V. M., actually.
Oh, okay, I'm close.
Address is two two three three Whispering Trail in Eagan. I have just a little shared studio space in the building, the applicant, and I've, for several years, and generally every Tuesday afternoon, a lot of Friday afternoons, occasionally a Wednesday afternoon, I'll go there and paint a little bit, and so I did it all last summer and all fall, and I've never encountered a parking issue. Usually there's two or three, or one other car in the lot, so I can't say I'm there every single one of the Fridays and Wednesdays, but for the last six months, there's been no issues whatsoever. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Next is Jaylani Hussein. Did I get that correct? Welcome.
My name is Jaylani Hussein. I'm the Executive Director of CARE Minnesota, the Council on American Islamic Relations, Minnesota Chapter, twenty-five eleven East Franklin, Minneapolis. Commissioners, I just wanted to go over a couple, a couple of points that I think would be important to recognize. First of all, I actually have an urban planning background from St. Cloud State University in city planning and urban development. And a couple of things that is always, I think, important to remember. Number one, churches, mosques, and synagogues have had the historically, the privilege of having the most friendliest zoning laws in the country. If you go across any city, anywhere in the country, you will find a mosque, a church, a synagogue in the most restrictive of planning spaces, including neighborhoods right next to R-one residential homes. Outside of schools and historical cemeteries, those three have fit everywhere. This mosque, obviously, is actually even further away from residential, R-one residential. So a couple of things. First, traffic. Traffic is something that is definitely have to be considered, but mosques usually have traffic problems when there is no traffic. Fridays at noon to two P. M., usually when the services occur, is the least amount of traffic congestion unless you have five McDonald's facing you, which in this case, there's no five McDonald's facing you. So therefore, there will never be a traffic congestion historically unless we have ninety-nine percent of the people coming to the mosque from Burnsville. So that should definitely let you know that whenever you do traffic studies for any mosque in the country, Fridays, high noon is usually when you have the majority of people showing up, and this is across the country, and you don't have any other traffic patterns that would collide usually. That leads to the parking issue, because traffic and parking go aligned with each other. With parking, usually mosques across the country and here in Minnesota, when they have their highest amount of usage for, for the space, it occurs again at a time when the parking situation is also the emptiest. Friday at twelve o'clock, usually you don't have a high parking demand on off-street parking as well as areas that usually have high demand. as well as areas that usually have high demand for parking. Therefore, that means the parking issue is not an issue usually. And in this case, the applicants have made, found a space that they would be able to use. And this is very normal for churches and mosques, when they grow, to find off-site parking spot. In this case, the, the issue at hand is this lease agreement versus the, the easement agreement. And the lease agreement, again, is something that planners have used for multiple types of ways to find ways to solve, whether it's a parking issue, among other issues. And it looks like the applicants have found multiple ways to, to, to address that situation. However, taking outside the head of the urban planner for a second, I think anytime we have a mosque applicant, and this is no different here in Burnsville, but, but all of the applications that we've ever seen in the state of Minnesota have come under some level of concern. And that's because the Muslims are among the newer communities that are moving in. And that sometimes creates a sense of hostility, anxiety, and a way to address some issues around this community as being different. However, I will, I want just to remind that, that, you know, we have laws that protect from religious discrimination, as, as Ellen mentioned a little bit earlier ago. And these laws are here to protect all of us against discrimination. And so when you ask questions to the mosque, it has to be the exact same number of questions you would ask if any other applicant walked into this facility. The fact that the police are concerned about parking and the, and the fire department is concerned about parking, again, Friday at twelve o'clock, which is again, the highest demanding time, there isn't any other. And usually, the, the, the width of those streets that you have in suburbia streets, that it lacks sidewalks, you have even a bigger space for vehicles to get through. Anecdotal stories about the cemetery in Burnsville do not really equate to this application and have no bearings on what's happening here today. And then other concerns that do exist, that unfortunately, in today's current environment do exist, is, is definitely something that we should not be considering for. So I encourage commissioners tonight to approve this. And while the staff do not recommend, I think it's very clear that you may not have an ordinance that addresses this particular issue, but this is a practice that has definitely existed. And because you don't have it in the ordinance, does not me, give you the right to reject it. It gives you the opportunity to explore that other option that, that is in place. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Amin Harun. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having us all here tonight. I am a resident at one-eight-zero-four Lennon Court in Burnsville. I'm a longtime resident of Burnsville. I've lived here since two thousand and one. And I am a member of this community that specifically is, has purchased this building at one-ninety River Ridge. We have really worked hard to pull our monies together, to make sure that we have a, a center that we can kinda come around and have a community. We've been having, trying to have a community around rental spaces, and it has not been easy. We've been moving around a lot. So finally, we have found the perfect spot that is kinda hitting a little bit off the big roads. And we have really are, we're, we're all kinda waiting and looking forward to have the opportunity to move in and to have a community center and prayer hall there. And we're actually, actually very grateful for the support and people that have shown up here and, and stated that the, all are supporting our, our effort to have this community center. But we're looking to you, the commissioners, our leaders here, to also, if we play fair, if we have, you know, fulfill all the requirements of this, the ordinances and the city requirements that we've just been given a, a fair shot. That's all we're asking. We're not asking for anything special treatment or anything like that. If accusations are made about specific things, we urge the city staff and leaders to find out about it and to just see if it is true. For, for many reasons, people make up stuff, and I, I heard some, some of the things. Every time I have an opportunity, I try to go see the building, I, when I come from work, when I'm not working, and it's almost always empty, even though we are paying for its mortgage, even though we, you know, officially own it, there's nothing going on. And I would like to see more activity and more families and more youth that are having good time at that building. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone we have on our sign-in sheet, but is there anyone else who'd like to comment on this? Sir, you could come up and identify yourself and give your address for the record. Welcome.
Hi, Jason McKenzie, representing Skateville Two Zero One River Ridge Circle. Not very prepared, I just kinda got a call this off, this afternoon that I might wanna just come and express any concerns, but thought I'd stop over. We've had a good relationship, business relationship with Daras Salam throughout the years. We did also verbally agree, you know, if there was any way we could help out, we want to be good neighbors, we want to make sure we cooperate with the city in any way. Didn't necessarily realize that, you know, blame for any parking issues, I'm not sure, but I know we, I can, during Christmas break, you know, school is out for a week, we did have, you know, a lot of kids, it was an abnormal week for us. I'm not sure if, but I'd be willing to cooperate if there was any, if the incidents matched up with one of our busy days or check attendance, but yeah, usually during the week, we always have buses that come in with groups during the week as our normal kind of itinerary. Our busy time is the weekend, so we don't conflict with a lot of the local businesses. But I've always had a good relationship, as far as I know, with all the neighbors. But yeah, as far as I could tell, I, I haven't noticed any difference in traffic, I didn't, you know, as of recently, so everything's been kind of operating as normal. But those are my observations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome. Can provide your name and address for the record.
My name is Dawn Gedke, and I actually live in Inver Grove Heights, but I belong to the Dakota Unitarian Universalist Church, which is in Burnsville. And I'm here to say that as a member of a small congregation such as this congregation, I just want to let you know that small congregations really appreciate it when cities can be flexible. And so if you could see your way clearer to, you know, seeing the flexibility of using a lease instead of a deeded, recorded deed, that would be gratefully appreciated. Small congregations face some challenges that the bigger ones don't, and so we'd kind of appreciate it just as a small congregation, knowing that you're willing to work with small congregations. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional comments? Welcome.
Commissioner's staff, thank you. My name is Jonathan Zagel. I'm the Vice President of Accounting and Finance at Better Business Bureau of Minnesota and North Dakota, located at two-twenty South River Ridge Circle. Since we were first approached by Daras Salam and Q specifically, we've been in good faith negotiations to provide what we can in order to help, in order to be good neighbors to them. We found that this lease relationship was a good opportunity to fill, hopefully, the requirements of the city and, and provide the parking. I actually have an office that faces what is now Daras Salam, and I've had that office for the last year and a half, and have never seen that parking lot more than half full before, during, or after the purchase. What another gentleman said is absolutely true. Friday is typically our low-population day, as far as our staff goes. The picture that's on this image right now is actually fairly typical for us on a Friday, maybe a couple more cars. You can see that most of our parking lot is empty, and that is the way it is most days, let alone on Fridays. We have a staff of forty, but typically only have about thirty cars in our parking lot, which is why it was very comfortable for us to allow for seventy spaces for Daras Salam to use. I think especially with the signage that is being proposed, it'll allow a flow from one side of their parking lot to ours, and if it is full, would then allow for the same type of flow or an opposite flow, and our own parking lot would be of maximum convenience to anybody attending there. But I'm also available to answer any other questions about why lease was chosen, but we stand in full support of Daras Salam in this effort.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Just wanted to, once again, on the funeral issue, to say that we have nothing to do with any funerals, and traffic on Highway Thirteen is irrelevant to us, and people crossing Highway Thirteen is also irrelevant to us. We have not used the building for anything, and that cemetery is not close in distance, it's probably about a mile away. So I don't know how that can be of concern, or, or any person in their right mind would make that a concern, but that has nothing to do with Daras Salam, and funerals have nothing to do with us whatsoever. Just wanted to make that point again. Thank you.
Additional comments? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Commissioner Banky, did you have a question for one of the?
I have a question for Jason McKenzie.
Yeah, if you would, please. Probably didn't think you were getting cross-examined.
Just a little clarification. You said that, you said that your busy days are the weekend.
Yeah, we're, yep.
And so there, there really is no Friday scheduled event or anything that's currently on your calendars or future calendars? You don't, you don't use Friday afternoon as a event time?
Uh, you know, I don't have my calendar in front of me, but, you know, we do book groups on Fridays, but a lot of times, you know, usually unless school's out, you know, like I said, this was kind of an abnormal week with Christmas break, but on Fridays, usually, you know, during the school year, if we have groups, they come by bus, so we don't use a lot of the parking, which is why, you know, I was willing to cooperate, you know, verbally. I think we struggled kinda getting into a legal obligation, committing to that, but, but yeah, I mean, we don't, we, we do still run, but, you know, we operate, we do, you know, Friday afternoons, it's not like we're, we never have a group or we're never open, but it's not usually our busiest time, no.
So I guess I'm getting at is, if it's a weekday, more likely than not, it's a school group or it's a group coming by bus.
Oh, unless, you know, it's a holiday, but yes, typically, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, discussion. Who would like to start? Mr. Commissioner Banky.
I was struck by what Yulan Hussein said about churches, and I, I do find that he's actually, he's right on. Historically, churches exist in the community, right in the residential areas, right in the fabric of the city. And I think historically, the parking of a church has been accommodated by the neighborhoods. And I, I see that there is work here by the neighborhood. It's not a residential neighborhood, but it's a neighborhood nonetheless to try to accommodate that. That's my observation.
I'll, I'll comment. To, having been here in April for this, when we talked about this project and more, or this, a different application, more detailed, the CUP, I, I just want to thank everybody from Daras Salam for working through all of this, and I want to thank staff, because I think staff has been going above and beyond the call of, of duty and working to help find some options here. But I would echo Commissioner Banky's comments. I think, and I'm interested to see where the other commissioners are on this, I am particularly, the, the nine conditions that are, are laid out in the event of approval by staff, particularly the one allowing the CUP to be reviewed in two years, is to me something we don't normally have in these kinds of things. We have to usually make a decision and then, or recommend to the council to make a decision, and then just hope everything works out in enforcement, where, if there are problems. But to me, it seems like this actually is a way to, 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 to review this and, and make sure that things are happening as, as anticipated. I do, you know, to me, the general question here of deed, deed restriction versus a lease, I, I understand where staff is coming from, the precedent issue and so forth, but I, to me, it seems like an acceptable request from the applicant. Commissioners, other thoughts or comments? Commissioner Timmerman.
I'd like to echo that. That's the same thing that I've been thinking. I, I'm concerned about the precedent this could set, but I also am appreciative of the fact that there is no precedent for a lease versus a recorded deed restriction. That being said, I think that if there were issues and we came back to this two years from now, the ordinance could certainly be updated to reflect those concerns with any precedence or, or any negative impacts with future properties going forward as well. I'm excited to see that the Better Business Bureau is on board with this, that they're willing to, to participate in this. I'm excited to see that other neighbors are as well. What I keep thinking is that Daras Salam, in good faith, tried to negotiate with the Better Business Bureau to get the deed restriction recorded, and we're not able to do that. And so I think that this is the next logical step in order to move this project forward. And I'll tell you that I would be in support of this with the nine conditions that are
Additional comments, commissioners, or Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, I probably have to move this, because you moved it before. Yeah, I, I listened to a lot tonight. That was one of the main things I wanted to do. And one of the things that was nice was we've had meetings here where this place has been full with a lot of, a lot of back and forth, and a lot of it was back rather than forward. I've seen a lot of negative people. It was great to see the community come out and support all of this, and it enlightened me on a lot of the questions that I had that I didn't have to ask because you answered them at the podium, so thank you. Job well done, very good. For the one incident that happened with the funeral, I remember that, so I think that's what we are kind of looking at as a non-issue right now. I don't see anything that's really, I don't know, bulldozing this backwards, but I think going forward might be the way to go. So that's, I'm, I'm very positive about this as well.
Any comments, Commissioner Henderson, or?
Well, as you had previously stated, I am concerned as staff about setting the precedents. But with that being said, the congregation has tried to work with the community, with the neighborhood, and they don't have any other options, and they've tried to work with what they had. Oh, also, I would be interested in how was the two years determined? Because I may be interested in maybe moving that down to a year to go along with the lease, to follow the lease timeline.
Ms. Carros, do you have insight on that question?
From my understanding, that was negotiated between staff and the applicant. I was not part of that, but that's what I understood and I came up with the two years.
Okay. Because me, personally, I just feel like the two years may be just a snitch too long. You know, especially having never had, Burnsville having done a lease before, you know, this is, will be setting a precedent, so let's not necessarily take baby steps, but let's be cautious with how to proceed.
That certainly would be in the purview of Planning Commission to recommend that.
I, the, the sense I would have on that is, is, I mean, they're still in the process of, of getting up and running. So two years to, or one years to me seems like you could very much not have an answer, not have a good sense. Two years actually gives some chance, some time to
To grow.
To get into it, to get into the, to the lease and so forth, so that, that's just my sense. I'm not a council member or Commissioner.
I guess the, the review I noticed in the background was a no fee, no charge. It was simply a, a review by the city. So there is no additional encumbrance for the, for the applicant for this.
That is correct.
Yeah.
And it's really just taking a look at the conditions, and are they being met, or are there issues, and then report back.
And then that's, at that point, then, nothing happens or something happens.
Exactly.
So it'd be a staff review, and then it would come back to the Planning Commission and the council if there were?
We would report, report what the findings are.
It's not something like a work plan.
But not a formal application or something of that sort.
Right. Okay. Additional, Commissioner Roberts?
Probably have to ask this now, because I know I won't be able to ask it later. This is just something that happened a few years ago in regards to a church and a hospital, but was there anything involved with when, oh, what am I thinking of? but was there anything involved with when, oh, what am I thinking of? Prince of Peace, did they lease out, or did they deed out, or part of their parking lot went to Fairview Ridges? Remember that?
For that, yes. There is an agreement. The entire Fairview Ridges campus, including Prince of Peace, is part of a planned unit development.
Okay.
And so there are joint parking, but those are recorded. They're just, they're not just leases, they are recorded on the various properties.
They are. Okay, so that's where we didn't get into a lease there?
Correct.
Okay, I just had to clarify that because I thought of something. Okay, thank you.
I think that the...
Commissioner Benke.
Yeah, sorry, trying to think. I think the big thing there is, the PUD is designed around the shared use of property and other benefits to the whole.
Right.
And, you know, here we are looking at a facility that has existed for a while in one form, and now it's being used in a different form, and it needs something. And if, you know, personally, I see this as them seeing what their needs are and perhaps building a parking lot, and I actually hope that's the direction that they're going to be going. But in the meantime, you know, they are having, they were struggling with the original D condition, and they came up with what probably is a unique solution for a unique location.
Additional discussions? Discussion, or do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Timmerman?
I move that the Planning Commission recommend the city council approval to allow off-site parking to be provided with a lease with the nine following, or with the nine conditions that we've been discussing.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to suggest one change, and if you'd be accommodating to it, and that's that, under condition nine, that the use of transit car and/or van pools, in my opinion, should also allow for shuttles as a specific use that's different than this, than those three. And if they did find that they needed more space, that they would have the ability to shuttle, and the staff wouldn't have to come back for that.
Do we need to modify the motion?
I would, it was just an amendment to his motion where the staff would be directed to add the term shuttle into that condition.
Is the maker of the motion acceptable, accept that?
I will add that amendment to my motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Additional discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. That will be before the city council on January 22 at 5:30 PM. Thank you all for coming this evening. Next item on our agenda, we would ask that folks take their conversations outside because we have an additional agenda item here. Two more, two more items. We'll just give a second for folks to clear out. Deb is the next one, right? You're the next item, too?
Yes.
You're everything.
Almost.
Regina gets the encore.
You get, yeah, you get the one that we're going to be going quickly through. All right, our next item. Let's give it another round.
Yeah.
The PA doesn't really... I know, I wish I had a gavel right now, that'd be great. Thank you all for coming.
Could you go back to in front of it? Yeah, we can't hear you.
No, for the two-year review period, what I initially proposed was every week or every month or something, but the city said they don't have time to do that, so they would make it every two years. So that was, and I think I heard Hooters, Hooters back in the days did a park and lease agreement in 2004. I don't know if that is true. Hooters? That we used to be by, where Dennis is now?
Oh, oh.
Yeah. I don't know if that is true or not, but that could be the precedent. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. All right, item four is a public hearing for Almir, am I saying it right? Poos? Poos, for the preliminary and final plat of Poos addition, conditional use permit for an open sales rental lot, use of four-foot curb for the sales rental lot, outdoor storage to allow two principal buildings on the lot, and variance to filtration basin slope standards, and to allow freestanding signs at 2208 Old Country, excuse me, Old County Road 34 Place. Ms. Garros?
For the members of the Planning Commission, and our applicant is here this evening.
Sorry, I butchered her name.
Nobody can pronounce.
And the subject site is an unplatted property that is located in a commercial building district. The district is B4, which is our highway commercial zone. It's about a little bit over two-acre site, and the applicant has owned the property since 2015, and they are looking to obtain the necessary land use and plating approvals so that they can convert the site from residential, which is a legal non-conforming use, to operate a couple of different businesses out of the site. As far as the subject site, they are looking to plat, and on the left is the preliminary plat, which shows all of the existing conditions. There's an existing single-family home on the property. There is a paved driveway that connects to Old County Road 34th Place, and the site is heavily wooded. There are some steep slopes on the very northern part of the site, and the subject site actually is something that was left over from when the property to the north was platted in 2000. We no longer would allow that, and, you know, for this applicant, it's kind of unfortunate because at the time of plating is when park dedication and different things come into play, and so that is what we're dealing with at this point in time. Staff has been working with the applicant for a couple of years to try to bring the site into compliance with city code, and this is an opportunity to be able to do so. As far as the plat is concerned, it will meet all of the requirements in terms of lot size, lot width, et cetera, of the B4 zoning district, and they will be providing the required drainage and utility easements, and then also the right-of-way needed for Old County Road 34 Place. In terms of green space, they are meeting and exceeding the requirements, both internally and overall, and with their building perimeter landscaping. The final plat is shown and has been reviewed by our city engineer's office. There are some technical items that need to be shown yet on the preliminary and final plat, and those conditions are included in their memo that was attached, and I believe the applicant is aware of that, and those are minor items, but they do need to be made, so we've recommended a condition to do that. Would result in a one-lot commercial project or development. And on this plan, this gives you an idea, the project is proposed to be done in phases, with the first phase to include the existing single-family house and remodeling that, and then converting that to business. The applicant has requested a conditional use permit because they primarily want to operate an auto sales rental lot, and in order to do that, then they would be installing the majority of the parking that's shown basically south and to the east of the subject site. The proposed businesses include office, which would be used for the auto sales rental, and then also on the westerly part to do a bakery, coffee shop type of application. Then for phase two, there is a proposal to construct a shop on the westerly side and some additional parking, which is shown. And the phase three that is shown is that they would like to have an open storage lot. All of these things require conditional use permit, so that we had advised the applicant that to ask for what they want, you know, based on what they see for their future businesses and opportunities, and that's why this is requested as well. On the, this is the site and utility plan. There are no public utilities that are associated with this project, so there will not be a development agreement that's required. There is some ponding that we'll show you in the next slide, and so there is a need for a lit agreement, which is basically their agreement to maintain their stormwater pond over time, and we'll discuss that further. In terms of the subject site, as indicated, to the north, there is an existing trailer that's been an issue for code enforcement. The applicant would like to continue to use that while they're renovating their home, and with that, staff has recommended a condition that they be allowed to use that for a year from when the CUP is approved, and then they have agreed to move that off the property. The subject site would be accessed with the phase one by the two easternmost driveways, and they are proposing to sign them and post them for one-way entrance on the far east, and then at the middle driveway that would be parking access or exiting the lot only. In the future, when they build the shop, which they anticipate doing after the phase one project is done, they would install the rest of the parking stalls and the loading area that is shown on the site plan to the far west. The stormwater pond that we've identified is shown on the north, and this site is in the drinking water overlay zone, so we have areas that are susceptible in our drinking water for the aquifer, et cetera, for pollution. And so the pond itself can't be one that allows water to percolate down into the ground. It needs to be lined or somehow established so that we don't have water getting down into the ground, and that's within the entire drinking water overlay zone. What the applicant has shown on this plan does meet the requirements of the city engineer. They have asked for a couple of variances, which I will touch on. One of them is a request for this stormwater ponding area to have a steeper slope than the maximum three-to-one slope. The city engineer has issues with that because it does either need to be lined or have some type of a impervious surface, clay or something of that sort, and their feeling is that with a steeper slope than the ordinance calls for and that the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency guidelines have, that there will be, it'll be more difficult to have those materials maintained without slipping down the slope, and because this is in the drinking water overlay, they want to see the performance standards followed as were required to do by MPCA. In terms of the rest of the site, it will need to be graded. There will be a number of trees that will need to be removed. The trees that are existing on site have been reviewed by our city forester, and there are a lot of dead and diseased trees on the property, and the applicant's been advised that they can remove those at any point in time. They did initially, when the application was submitted earlier this summer, provide a tree removal worksheet and inventory. They are allowed to remove up to 60% of the trees on site before they would have to start putting additional trees back or providing for tree replacement. What we have done is, we know that there will be additional grading associated with the stormwater pond, and we have added a condition that the applicant will need to provide updated plans showing what those removals will be, and if they're over 60%, then they will need to provide the required reforestation. On this plan, this is something that was submitted by the applicant, just basically showing that truck turning movements can be provided primarily to access the second building on the west, and the loading area is to the north, so they will be able to get through and to back in to do loading and then exit the site. In addition to the two buildings, there is a new trash enclosure that's proposed to be located right here in between the two buildings. In addition to that, there is additional storage that's going to be created within the existing building. There is this small area that is the existing garage that will be converted to storage, and then this is actually a walkout, so the entire basement area will be used for storage as well. The existing home, as I stated, is considered to be legal non-conforming, and with that, they are allowed to make changes. If this application is approved, it will not be allowed to be used as a residential dwelling at any point in the future. It would be converted entirely to business. They're not required to upgrade the exterior for a legal non-conforming use unless they're making improvements beyond 50% of the value. With that, the applicant has provided information showing the improvements that they are proposing. On the floor plan that was provided, they are showing the addition of new doors and windows for the commercial use going into the bakery, and then the seating area is proposed, and they are proposing improvements on both the north and south that include decking. There is a possibility that there would be a porch installed as opposed to a deck. The applicant has not decided. In either event, the improvements do meet all of the setback standards and requirements of the ordinance. And this is just a view showing the proposed improvements for the bakery and cafe, and then in the center of the building, that's where they would access the new auto sales offices. The floor plan shown above is for the phase two building, and this is basically to provide auto service, which is a permitted use in the district. Also, the bakery café is a permitted use in the district. It's just the outdoor sales and rental lot that needs the conditional use in terms of the types of uses. So they're showing that there will be up to six loading bays. Again, the, on the north, they're showing where the parking area will be. The building size that is proposed is 7,254. This is, again, in the B4 zoning district, and we do have a requirement that commercial buildings be at least 10,000 square feet in area. With what is proposed in the phase two and the square footage in the phase one building, they will comply with that requirement. The applicant, at this point in time, has been provided information on what our commercial requirements are for materials and screening, et cetera, and they have also been provided our architectural tool to know what the, what the city would like to see. At this point in time, they are showing that they will construct a building. They're looking at it to be 22 feet tall, and on the, let's see, oh, show this. They are proposing, basically on the west side, to also have a second-story mezzanine office for break room, office, and bathrooms as well. And what they have indicated and what we have recommended is that at such time that they decide to come in with the building permit for the second building, they will be required to meet all of the exterior materials and other commercial requirements of the zoning ordinance in effect at the time. We have done something similar to this in the past. It was for a planned unit development, and that was for Green, let's see, Green Horizons, I believe was the name of the building. That's just across from the Walmart in Burnsville, and it's a small landscaping business, and at the time that they came in, they had a planned unit development, so it was a little bit different, but they also wanted to have a second building, and we did something very similar in terms of conditioning that planned unit development, similar to what is recommended here. The trash enclosure information has been submitted, and this does meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and will be a new, a new facility on site. In terms of the site signage that's proposed, there are three different signs. There's a 17-foot sign, which is in the There's a 17-foot sign, which is in the upper left-hand corner. A monument sign on the bottom, which is proposed to be eight feet tall. And then also a pylon sign, which depending on the plans, is either 30 or 40 feet tall that's proposed. The applicant is requesting variances to allow the three signs to be installed, as proposed. On the application, we do have a couple of inconsistencies between the plans. But we believe that this can be provided, meeting the ordinance. On this particular plan, they show the monument sign in this location. And this would be where the new front drainage and utility easement is. And then also in this location for the taller pylon sign. The signs are not allowed to be within the drainage and utility easements. The plans that were done by the engineer do show that there's a location where the monument sign could be located and meet the ordinance setbacks. In terms of variance considerations, we did explain this to the applicant. But they would like to use these signs. For a variance, you need to meet the practical difficulties test, if you will. And it's defined for you in the report and in the ordinance. In terms of the slopes, I think that we've discussed that. From a staff perspective, this is something that's not recommended. It's something that the applicant would like to have so that they don't need to take down more trees. However, because this is in the drinking water overlay and the need to meet MPCA requirements, the same as the city does, our staff does not recommend this variance. The second variance for the signage, if you wanted to allow a taller monument sign, then the ordinance allows a six-foot sign, and they want eight feet. That would be something that you could consider as part of a variance. Variances are used for things like setbacks or deviations in terms of height, et cetera. Something a variance cannot be used for is to allow something that is not permitted by the ordinance. You cannot have a use variance. And in this particular situation, for the subject site, it's located on a city street. This is a table right out of the ordinance. The miles per hour is 30, 30 miles per hour on the street. So the site is restricted in terms of freestanding signs, pylons, et cetera, to a sign with an area of only 20 square feet and six square, or excuse me, six feet in height. So with that, if the planning commission and council find that there is a practical difficulty for this application that's not caused by the applicant and is something that's unique to this property with respect to other properties, you can recommend approval of a variance. Staff would not be opposed to the increase in height of the monument sign. We believe that that's something that's possible to be varied. But the other two signs are not permitted. And we are recommending denial of that. With that. Staff is recommending denial of the variances for the signage and slope standards. But we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit, preliminary and final plat. And we have 17 conditions that are identified. And I can go through those in detail. The one that I will note for you is that the applicant is currently working with Dakota County on an environmental issue associated with the property. And that's something that can't be remedied over the winter months because of frozen soils. So they have been working toward that. But we've included it as a condition because it's not complete yet. And with that, I can stand for questions. I'd be glad to go over any details and the specific conditions if there are questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Questions? Commissioner Benke.
Sort of front to back here. I guess, the first thing, the four-inch curb, I mean, that's basically a parking issue. It's cartilage and scrape, and it's pretty common in our, in our parking areas.
We amended the ordinance some number of years ago for sales and rental lots because we had several of the dealers identified that they had issues with the deeper curb. So that is something that can be done. It's a lot by the ordinance, but they do need the conditional use permit to do that.
Yeah, it does let the, let the parking space handle a car a little easier, I think. I have, I'm struggling a little bit with the, with a couple of the technical aspects of the site plan here. You know, it's pretty clear with the, in, with the entrance, you know, you come in on the, on the east.
Yes.
And then presumably, you turn in the first bay. And then you, it looked like there was customer parking in that upper row. And they had the first row as display, as car displays?
Yes.
So that traffic seems to flow. But if by some, if you are going to the bakery and you go all the way up and park, and try to park up in that upper one, there's really no way out of here until Phase Two happens. And those parking spots are essentially backward. I mean, is staff working with them to try to enhance their site plan still?
We have done that. We recommended that the parking, the diagonal parking be changed. And I will let the applicant address why they are choosing not to do so.
All right. The other thing I noticed is, you know, for me, the architecture, it appears that the structure that has the most architectural detail in it is the trash structure currently. Is that being built as part of Phase One or as part of the future phases?
That would be built as Phase One.
Okay. I think I'm going to suggest that we incorporate some continuity of design into our recommendation, in case, thanks. I'm, the signage thing has got me a little bit here. I'm seeing other numbers too. So under signage, so we're allowed 125 square feet or 18% of the building frontage. And now that's on the building signage. That's not the signs out front.
That's for the entire site.
That's, so that includes, that includes what's out front?
That's correct, yes. The entire site signage is based on the frontage of the facades facing the street.
Okay, so they're actually allowed up to 363 square feet because that's the 18%. Okay. Okay. And then I also noticed that monument signs can be, more than one can be placed on the site as long as they can be separated by 300 feet. But this site does not have 300 feet of frontage. So we're limiting it to one. Okay. Oh, I guess, I think you just touched on it a little bit. So we currently have some spillage or contamination on the site based on what the current use? And that's what you were relating to item number one in the recommendations?
Yes, the, the county has been out to the site. And they have identified areas where there appears to be something spilled oil or solvent on that, on various parts. They've identified those locations to the applicant and sent the citations out. And what the applicant needs to do then is to dig up all of the soils and then contain that and then work with Dakota County to make sure that all of the contamination is taken care of.
And the applicant, I mean, in the final, the final solution here, they're looking at pavement everywhere to control the runoff and to catch any, anything.
That's correct.
But doesn't this all run into the storm sewer? I mean, isn't there, I mean, if they have a, how does that work with our other auto-related industries? And basically, if there's a leak, it's going in the storm sewer system?
I think I'll let Ms. Lloyd address that.
I would assume that the oils and things would be contained within the facility there within Phase Two.
Sure.
But yes, like any other city street or parking lot, it's materials that are on that impervious surface would eventually make their way to the storm sewer system.
So there's no requirements for submanholes or something to try to protect areas, especially where, since we're in the water overlay?
We have not recommended that at this time.
Okay. And Deb, the delivery loading activity is restricted. The hours are seven to 10 a.m. Is that Monday through Friday, or is that seven days a week?
That would be seven days a week, and that's directly out of the ordinance.
Okay, that's my question.
I've got a water question. The drinking water protection area, and this is a little more for my information. So the pond is lined. So how does the water ultimately get out of it? Just evaporation? There's no infiltration?
I believe, is there, is there an outlet?
It's labeled as a filtration pond, which, may I?
What was that?
I said it's labeled as a filtration pond, which normally means that there's media in the bottom and there's a, some kind of an outlet structure in the bottom drain tile where, as the water filters through and it's cleaned and then it leaves through the structures. Now, that's what I read here, when it is a filtration basin.
Is that, you're understanding as well?
Yes, yep.
Good work. Good guess. Okay. That was a real specific guess. Additional questions for Ms. Garros? Commissioner Timmerman.
You may have said this. I'm just curious, what is happening on the property just north of this? It looks vacant on the pictometry.
Yes, that site is also zoned B4. In 2000, there was one owner that owned the entire property, both the north and this piece. And at that point in time, they had planned to develop it. For whatever reason, that never went through. They did go through and plat the north lot. But the development fell through, and it's just vacant. It's zoned the same as the subject site.
Additional questions for Ms. Garros? Should we have the applicant? We'll call the applicant up for some questions. You have a question for the applicant, correct? I swear, I swear you did.
I'm sure, I'm sure I do. It seems like I always do.
Welcome.
Hi.
Commissioner, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
My name is Almir Putz. That's how you pronounce my last name.
Oh, that's why I had you identified, so I could.
I don't live there anymore. I moved out of the house, like, 2017 in September.
Okay.
So I'm trying to get all that done, so I started business there. Now I live in Shakopee.
I think my, my question really is going to revolve around the variance requests that appear to exceed our ability to even allow, allow you, you know, the signs and things. Where, where is your rationale behind those requests?
I'm not worried about signs that much. But I'm worried about the pond that's behind the house that I need to make because I'll have to cut much more trees. And then I'll have to start planting new ones. And so that's only what worries me about the pond. The signs, I'm not worried. If, we can only make one sign, it's one sign. If that's allowed, I can change laws.
Right. And I also had a question. Your proposed Phase Three, I mean, that, and I realize that's down the road, but it's part of the request here. And that area is very steeply sloped right now. So I'm curious as to what kind of outside storage.
I requested a storage area before they made me get the pond bigger and bigger and bigger.
Okay.
So when we first started, it was a small pond.
Okay.
And then when we submitted, then the city engineer said it needs to be bigger. We submitted again, it's bigger. So it came, covered the whole storage area.
Okay.
So now it's only left a little part on the north side that's.
Okay.
But they said, you know, if I'm going to use it ever for something, submit it right away, so I didn't have to go through all over again.
Sure. Okay. Are you, are you open to, you know, working on the design of the shop building when you get to that point then, so that it complements the, I mean, it, it has some character that, that fits, you know, what you're trying to do there?
Yeah.
I mean, are you, are you planning on leaving the house forever then? Or are you?
Nobody lives in the house.
Right, but it's, it's a house that's being used as an office.
Yep.
And that's not really a normal situation in our city. I mean, obviously, it happens in other places. Right now, there's, there's a number of them that happen. But are you looking long-term at, at actually creating a dedicated, you know, office building there?
That is going to be an office building and a bakery and coffee shop.
Okay.
When I try to get the old papers, then that's, that's going to stay forever, I hope.
Okay.
So we'll see.
Okay, I think that's what I have.
Additional questions? Commissioner Roberts.
Yeah, in regards to the, the two buildings, from the time, what's the timeframe from your, your first phase to your second phase? That you expect?
It depends. When I do first phase, then I can move my delicious bakery and stuff. Depends how fast I start making good money then. Because it costs a lot of money to build a building.
Yeah, substantially a lot.
So that's why I'm, you know, trying, soon as I start making good money then. So I'm trying to get the bakery going and a car dealership.
Okay. So you're not doing any repairs or anything?
No.
Before that, it's particularly going to be a car dealership?
Yep, and a bakery and coffee shop.
And the bakery and coffee shop, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And then, just to piggyback on that, in regards to what your plans are for the structure, the outside looking of the house, is the, the new Phase Two going to be either complementing or following that design, that color? I mean, are you going to be changing out? Once you start building the Phase Two, is the house and everything going to follow what that's going to be looking like? So it kind of is synonymous, or are they going to be? Is it going to look like a house and going to look like a storage shed?
No. I don't want a storage shed. I want a nice building, so when people come there, so they can see.
Okay.
You don't want some crappy hillbilly shed that people run away from.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was about the parking, yeah, Commissioner Benke. I was going to remind you.
Commissioner, can I jump in?
Yeah.
Okay. Was there a reason why the parking that's closest to the bakery shop and the office, is there a reason why that is specifically angled away from the direction of traffic?
Because nobody's going to park there. Those parking stalls are for cars that are for dealership.
Okay.
And where the, in front of the building, that's only left for a fire truck and a delivery truck. And there's going to be gate, so nobody's going to be able to get in.
Okay.
Only when fire trucks show up, then I have to move the gate or chain, whatever is it.
Okay, so, so a, somebody coming to get coffee or coming, coming to get a donut or from the bakery, okay, they would need to park in the dedicated parking, parking area?
Because it's going to be labeled.
And then walk, and then walk into the building.
Yes.
Okay. That makes sense, I guess.
Additional questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. I think we will open the public hearing then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Open the public hearing at 8:14 p.m. Anyone interested in speaking on this side up, please come forward and identify yourself. You sure can. You can identify yourself and give your address for the record.
My name is Deborah Everson, and I am, been working with Deb and Almir on this project. And I'm an architect, and I'm also a building official with the state of Minnesota. And I live in the Minneapolis area. I am, want to say that the signage is very important, even though he said he could back off on it. This location is a block off of Five and a block off of 13. And it's kind of set back. And in order to maintain some visibility, some notice, we wanted something that, you know, goes up high enough so that cars can see it. And, I mean, it's just like, you need signage and, you know, branding and all those good things. So I'm fighting for the signs, the height. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? If not, we'll close the public hearing at 8:16 p.m. Commissioners, comments, additional questions for staff?
Good question from Ms. Lloyd.
Commissioner Timmerman.
So can we talk about the pond a little bit?
Sure.
Obviously, I'm sorry to interrupt you here, but I'll direct my question to you.
No, that's fine.
What kind of, I, I guess, if they wanted to go to a two-to-one ratio, what kind of other products are there that could allow for that? Is that something that happens in other communities? I guess, is that even something we should be considering as far as? I guess, is that even something we should be considering as far as the water issues that are of concern?
I guess I don't know if that is allowed in other communities. It would require a variance from the MPCA. So it is certainly something that could be looked into. The concern from staff, again, was with that pond liner. If the soils would maybe not be suitable to really get into that, or would slough off of that pond liner. So that was a concern there. And I understand that they're not looking at the clay liner, which would be the other option for, for that filtration basin. So it would, again, require that variance from the MPCA, and that is something at this time that staff is not recommending, but could go that route to look into that.
Commissioner Banky, do you know if there's products that can...
My thing is that, the way it's always been in the industry is, a three to one is the maximum maintainable slope. I mean, anything more than that, and you do run into issues with rutting, with mowing and things like that. I mean, if the area is to be maintained, three to one is the accepted standard. And, you know, I guess the only thing I'll say is, you know, even if we were to suggest that it met enough of our standards to be allowed as a variance, that the MPCA might still deny it.
Interesting. Commissioners, additional comments, questions? Commissioner Banky?
Yeah, I'm struggling with the sign too. I mean, I appreciate the issue of trying to bring people in there, but, you know, that was the choice to purchase that lot. So I can't see how, you know, that could ever meet the standard of it not being a, something of the owner's making. You know, that area has been revamped ad nauseam. I mean, Old County Road Thirty Four Place is essentially what used to be Highway Thirteen way back in the day. And it, you know, went all the way over to Prior Lake and south, and it's certainly not that anymore. But by the same token, you know, it is in the middle of a residential area. And to me, that seventeen-foot sign changes the character significantly. I think that it's not part of the application at all, but I would suggest that, you know, if there are more businesses in here, especially with how this area has developed over the years, that they're, you know, maybe they should be looking into some kind of signage at Morgan and Williams for the whole area, you know, some kind of an area sign. Again, it's not part of the application, it's just something that could be a different solution, and not, not be a seven, you know, a pole that's thirty to forty feet tall, just so we can see that we're there behind all the, all the houses.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Frankly, that's why I asked about the north property. I don't think the specifics of the signage ordinance as to whether or not you could contract to put signage on their property to be closer to Highway Thirteen, but I think the height of the sign certainly does not fit the area.
Yeah, I have to agree. When I drove that, coming down five to turn, I, you, there's no way you'd see a sign. You're over a block and a half away, and you, I mean, it would have to be specifically in a direct line of sight facing this way, not even parallel with the street. And trying to get over the trees to go see it from the highway is gonna be quite the feat. I don't think that, I mean, you'd have to be way over the trees to see it.
It's sort of deceptive right now, because the tree, the site is so heavily treated right this second. You know, obviously, it won't be, I mean, that's no different than the phone building next door, or the lot that was the, what was that, the Chamber, or was it the JC's Building?
JC's.
Yeah, and, you know, those lots were all in there, and were all heavily treated like this too, so...
Additional questions or comments? It, Ms. Garros?
Something that I should include, it's something that we included in the staff report, and for the applicant is requesting for their park dedication fees associated with the plat to be waived. And we did provide that background information in your, your report. The city council is the only board or entity that can make those decisions. So this item will be on the city council's regular agenda, even regardless if your vote is unanimous, so that they can discuss that issue. Thank you.
Commissioners, where are we? I'm, in terms of the two, the variances, the pond one is the one that I feel like we've got the least latitude with. Is that the general sense? Although MPCA is a different, different animal altogether, that seems to be the one that we challenge with. I will, on the sign one, offer a little bit of disagreement on that. I think this is a challenging site. And I agree that there is a, that residential area right over there is right, right nearby. It's, and it's closer when you're actually there and not looking at it from above, it seems. So I, I don't know, I'm a little more supportive of the sign, sign variance, but...
I'll make a motion.
We have a commissioner, Banky?
I make a motion, the planning commission recommends the city council denial of the variances for the signage and slope standards, and then approve the CFP, preliminary and final plat, subject to the following seventeen conditions. As written.
So motion, is your second. It's been moved and seconded, so your motion is...
As written.
Seriously? I'm surprised by that.
Especially since it's me, right?
Any, any additional discussion? Or comment? I think I will be voting against the motion, just on the sign principle, but... All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. All right, this will be before the city council on January twenty-second at five thirty PM. Thank you very much. All right, now the, the long part of the program. Ms. Dean, for an Item Five, Burnsville Center, County Road Forty-two redevelopment plan presentation.
Good evening, chair members of the commission. Just have to pull up the presentation quick.
Center of knowledge.
Good evening again. So as a commission, I, I believe you are very well informed of the proposal before you. You've been engaged as part of this County Road Forty-two, Burnsville Center redevelopment vision for the past six months, really, and some would be longer. So this really started out as a council initiative before we started our comprehensive plan. So when the council was brainstorming a few years ago, one of the ends and outcomes or directives essentially was to look at our retail areas, specifically around Burnsville Center. Also, we knew that Orange Line, Bus Rapid Transit would be coming. And so as part of our comprehensive plan, our long-range plan, we focused some of those areas, or some of the areas per those ends and outcomes or council direction, to focus on the Burnsville Center area. So that was kind of Phase One, Phase Two with the comp plan, and then Phase Three, as part of the implementation, a study or plan, ultimately a vision. The overall area that we're looking at is surrounded by McAndrews to the north, goes all the way over to Portland to the east, to the south, approximately South Cross, and then to the west, County Road Five. So this was kind of the greatest scope, greatest area that we were looking at. We then narrowed down further, but what this area on your screen highlights is really our employment centers that are part of this regional draw, or this future center village area that we'll be talking about in further slides. So within this area, we have Collins Aerospace, formerly UTC. We have Fairview, Bridges, Park Nicollet, as well as Burnsville Center has a lot of employment as well in the surrounding retail area. And then there's also a lot of multifamily housing around here as well. So then, again, we narrowed down that scope and took a further look at Burnsville Center proper, and then also what we call more of a core center village area that's north of this area. Do you want to point out, the Burnsville Center area, it's an area of great focus. When we're talking about this plan, even though we're talking about this greater area, a lot of questions come up about the Burnsville Center. Are they closing? What's happening? Is the city tearing this down? No, the city's not tearing down Burnsville Center. The Burnsville Center is owned by multiple property owners. In the center, we have CBL that controls the property, and kind of the legs of the parking areas or outlots. Then we have anchor stores. We have JCPenney, Macy's. CBL does own where Dick's Sporting Goods is located. And then formerly Sears or Saratage owns the east part of the property there, the real estate wing or entity that was formerly Sears. So, again, we're, we're not actively pursuing that, these property owners shutter. What we're hoping to do is create a vision, so if, if they want to transform their property, we have a plan in place, or a vision set in place. As part of this vision, if you recall, we looked at precedent malls around the Twin Cities. Came to mind was Ridgedale Center in Minnetonka, Southdale and Edina, and then nationally, Belmar. So when we're looking at other precedent cities, we're seeing activity going on. We're seeing these areas transformed to what used to be a traditional indoor mall, to incorporation of mixed-use, housing, entertainment spaces, green space, open space, outdoor activity centers, and these were, through the process, used as examples. As part of the development of this vision, as, as you may recall, we did hire a consultant to do much of this lake work. And part of that research, they're looking at comparable malls. And specifically, Burnsville Center with Eden Prairie Center, Southdale and Ridgedale, and looking at the demographics to incorporate into this, this document or this plan. What we found out was that the five miles around the Burnsville Center area is, is really comparable to some of the other regional mall areas. And in fact, we're, we're more mid to high compared to some of these other mall areas as far as average household, average household income. As far as rents that these malls, mall areas are commanding for their retail space, were actually quite low, as you see in this bar graph. So this was some of the data that was compiled to show kind of where, where we are, and potentially where we, where we could be as we begin to thrive and transform. As part of this process, as you recall, we engaged not only our city commissions, Parks Commission, Economic Development Commission, other agencies, MINDOT, Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, Dakota County was at the table. We also engaged our public, and we had a very well-attended public open house, I believe on a very snowy night, pretty much a packed house. We had questions that we provided on our city website, and were, had received a lot of engagement through, through that, as well as our social media platforms. So through this public engagement, through these conversations with property owners, what you see on your screen right now is a Wordle. Basically, it's coming up with the highly talked about, I guess, wish list of people, what they want to see within this area. Walkable area, restaurants, parks, housing, entertainment, a destination, they want to see it revitalized. I mean, again, through the property owner conversations, we were hearing a lot of the same responses. They want to feel connected, bike trails, make this place walkable, restaurants, needs to be refreshed. Improve Forty-two, so County Road Forty-two kind of runs through east and west, and it's, it's a really a corridor to a lot of our businesses within Burnsville. One of the things that came up was, whatever you do, don't slow down the flow of County Road Forty-two. It's already pretty bad at times. Either improve it, or, or just don't make it worse. We keep it, we, we need it. It's a great asset to the community. So taking that information, you'll see some of the ideas in future slides. Within the document, again, you'll see that we came up with different goals or strategies. I just picked out a few to highlight to the commission. Of course, within your packet's the final draft of the document, but just to highlight some of the areas where we want to, to focus on through this vision is to strengthen our gateways. So how can we make this a place that's desirable, that people remember, that people want to talk about, and that people want to revisit and stay? We want to create kind of a gateway effect, something to highlight, something to brand, and to enforce that this is, this is the place to be. In this picture, you'll see a bikeway or a walkway. And what this could be in the future is that connection from the south, where current Burnsville Center is located, to the north, and yet still having that traffic up above, letting that County Road Forty-two flow. Another idea is to broaden the land use mix that we allow. So through our comprehensive plan, the southern half of the Burnsville Center, we are proposing to re-guide that to mixed-use, to allow additional housing. What we're proposing as part of this vision plan is to carry that mixed-use idea throughout the entire Burnsville Center, but also to bring that further north and further west as well. So not that it all has to become mixed-use, but it gives people the opportunity to, to incorporate that in their properties. Now, we'll get into the, once this vision plan's complete, once it's adopted by the council, assuming it's adopted by the council, we'll have a lot of additional work to do. We'll have to change the guide plan and change zoning to help facilitate some of this change to happen. Again, address County Road Forty-two, knowing that this is a crucial area, a crucial gateway, transportation corridor. We want to take a good look at what we can do to not impact its, its flow, and embrace it as well. Improve connections in adjacent destinations. One of the things we're looking at are, and you'll see again further down, is how can we incorporate Bus Rapid Transit? How can a future Orange Line station be accommodated on-site? How can people walk within this corridor? How can they bike? What do we have to do to establish that, establish those mobility options? Embrace technology. We want to allow for the opportunity for electric vehicle charging stations, for people to have wireless technology easily accessible, and incorporate also sustainability features that kind of go hand in hand. And then we want to celebrate our international population. When I think of places that I like to, to visit, it's, it always goes down to food, music, and we want to create this authentic place. We've got great restaurants throughout all of Burnsville. And so this would be a great place to bring, whether it's permanent or through pop-ups, a great way to celebrate our multicultural demographic. Here is a couple of early vision sketches, so as you may recall through your involvement through this process, our consultant was actively sketching different ideas based off what they were hearing from our commissions and council, from the property owners, and some of the early, these are really some of the... And some of the early, these are really some of the early ideas that were emerging. One of the ideas was to create a north-south spine. Aldrich Avenue runs north and south. And the idea was to potentially extend that south through the Burnsville Center property. Approximately where my hand is located is where the currently vacant Sears building is located. So the idea would be to bring it through, really open up the mall, create a Main Street effect, and allow for that connection to occur. Other ideas came forward about adding green space, adding structured parking. What could this area look like? Ultimately, this is our current vision plan that you'll see in the final draft document. Still taking that idea of extending Aldrich Avenue, keeping County Road 42, but enhancing it with streetscape, decorative lighting, trees. As you see, this is a very robust green plan. What it will ultimately look like, we don't know yet. We don't know those details. But this gives you an idea. This gives you a vision. This gives the property owners a vision or idea. Another thing I want to point out, the idea of incorporating housing in the southern portion of the property to really capture those views and those connections with Early Lake. The trail system's great, and it's really not fully utilized how it can be. We incorporated the idea of park space. If you look at Ridgedale Center, the city is working with the property owners to incorporate park space, I believe, near where the JCPenney is located. The idea of year-round use is Winter Garden Park. So maybe that incorporates ice skating or outdoor curling during the winter. But you can also use it for, you know, space during the summer, summer concerts or different pop-up events. Lot of incorporation of walkable streets, creating this compact, complete, connected area. We do envision that the southern area will develop first. Within the next five years is really the focus. Not to this extent. Obviously, we'll be having one-on-one conversations with property owners, working with their vision. It will, you know, develop over time. And then the area to the north, this is more of a 20-year plan. We've got some great thriving businesses. If you drive through the Target parking lot, it's constantly packed. We don't see, you know, that area going total wine. Any of those businesses, it'll transform, but maybe not as aggressive as one may, you know, see in this vision plan. As part of this plan, we did take a look at potential street improvement. So you'll see especially the north area changing to more of a grid-type pattern. And you'll kind of see that too in the southern portion of the plan as well. One idea that came forward, again, looking at County Road 42 and not wanting to slow that down, the idea to create an additional sort of north, I'm sorry, east-west frontage road to parallel that, to take, to not distort the traffic that we have on County Road 42, but bringing that alternate driving for people that want to shop or go to entertainment or restaurants and bringing them south to the center village area. And then just a visual that we included that we wanted to highlight that shows a pedestrian and bicycle connection that could occur north-south under County Road 42 and what that could look like. Again, transit was something that was highlighted in a transit-oriented development or mixed-use scenario. You want to have active transit. Orange line's expected to be, to run on every 15-minute cycle. Destinations are heart of the city, Richfield, Bloomington. You can take the bus to Minneapolis, transfer to St. Paul in the Green Line, transfer to the North Star if you wanted to. And opportunities to go both ways, reverse commute. If you just want to visit a friend in Richfield, you can, you know, do that. Someone in Richfield could come down here and go shopping or entertain, meet a friend for a drink. So there's, incorporating transit will be huge. It'll help take off some of that traffic too. We're incorporating additional housing units. The vision, I think, calls for 1,600 additional units. So the idea is, people will want to visit here, but maybe they'll be taking the bus instead of using vehicles and won't put that strain necessarily to the extent that one might think onto County Road 42 or onto the adjacent highway. It'll still happen, but maybe not to that extent. So we are, as part of this, we did explore potential locations. What rose to the top was the Orange Line Extension Station 3 that's located here. We envision that most of the activity, short-term, will happen near the eastern portion of the mall and the Sears location. Additional housing units as well. And for timing, just the bus timing as well, this seemed like an ideal location. Dakota County will be exploring this further as well as metro transit. Pedestrian and bike network, we want to make sure that that's something that's incorporated into this plan. Again, we have a lot of corporate businesses. We've heard from Collins Aerospace that a number of their employees bike year-round. More in the summer, of course, but year-round, people are biking. People are walking, want a place to walk to lunch. For example, we heard from Park Nicklet and Fairview that their, some of their nurses and their techs, doctors, want a place to walk for lunch. And they would love to walk here or bike here for lunch or, you know, afternoon, after-work dinner, or even live in this area and walk to work. So we want to make sure we embrace that. Parks and open space, there's certainly places for active open space. Again, I talked about this plaza, this Winter Garden Park, but then also areas for other opportunities, taking into account more of that passive view of Early Lake, those trail connections, green space connections, whether they're in the public realm or private realm as well. Just another look at center village vision, specifically the park. Just gives you a different perspective of how this could look. One of the things we had the consultant do was put together a cost estimate of what some of these improvements could cost. Specifically, streetscaping, on-street bike lanes, what that underpass might cost. Not only does this give you an idea of magnitude, but it gives staff the opportunity to take this document and request grants, request funding from different sources. I kind of like to think of this as more of an investment. The number may seem huge, but it'll pay off, right? So as you make these improvements, as you make this a desirable place, as you start negotiating these items with developers, this doesn't all have to be on the public itself. It can be a way that we, a tool that we use to negotiate. If someone's asking for deviations or a waiver from some city code requirement, we can, there's things we can ask for, dedication right away, things like that. So it's spelled out. It's kind of our expectations. It's a tool that we can use in many ways with talking with the private sector as well as other public entities when asking for money. When we had our consultant look at potential for land use for this area, it's heavily retail right now. And what our vision shows is that half of it could become residential. Could that be retail on the bottom floor with residential on top? Maybe just all residential, you know, towers, kind of a mix of higher-density townhomes, mixed with mid-rise, mixed with the high-rise? Who knows? But all spelled out, they thought that this area could accommodate those 1,600 units. That's certainly a change from what's there now. We still envision that retail's going to be big for this area. It's certainly a great destination, something that will be needed in some format as this area evolves. And then also some component of hospitality, hotel, office and healthcare. With that, how that change looks in a bar graph? So existing land use, again, mostly retail. What that could look like with those mixes stated? And then what that equates to potential real estate value. Certainly, you're adding more rooftops, you're adding more square footage. But you're looking at $125 million to almost $1 billion of real estate value, which equates to additional tax benefit as well. So as far as implementation, we took a short-term, midterm and long-term approach. Zero to five years, about six to 10 years, and then 10 years to 20 years. What you're seeing here is short-term. So having those early conversations with our, the property owners, knowing, figuring out where they are and what they want to do, especially with Saratage, for example. And then some of our existing property owners, CBL with JCPenney. What are your immediate needs? What are your mid- and long-term needs? Just having that, knowing that. One of the things that we recently have done is hired new staff. So, for example, I'm now a redevelopment coordinator. So my current job is to make sure that this plan gets implemented. And so you'll see that as bullet number one on this slide here. I talked about the Orange Line Extension Project and finding out where that station goes. And just having those early, again, early conversations. We will be, again, changing the zoning too and the land use. That's, again, you'll see me, even though my position's changed, Planning Commission will still see me a lot as we're working out some of these details with zoning, land use and as development projects come through. So the midterm, where that Orange Line Extension is actually located and built and actively running, hopefully that County Road 42 underpass that bike-ped connection, making those connections with the highly active retail uses that we have currently going on to the north and making just improvements overall. And again, that's about a six to 10-year, could be sooner, kind of depends. And then long-term, really filling out the area to the north. That could be, you know, longer range. Again, we've got a lot of thriving properties. But, for example, Coles, that's one property that comes to mind. There's a lot of parking within that area that's not used. Could part of it be carved out and an additional type, some type of building be located there? Are there other opportunities to maybe keep the retail on the ground floor, but maybe add additional housing or other uses up top? But that could be longer range. We just, I know I have the question slide up, but we have checked in with various commissions and committees. We had the opportunity to check in with the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce Policy Committee. We expect that they'll be providing a recommendation of approval soon by the end of the month. They did have some concerns with the potential funding sources for some of the items that were called out that they may make a statement on, but overall supportive of the document. We've also brought this forward to our Economic Development Commission. They recommended approval. We brought this before our Visitors and Convention Bureau and the Mayor/CEO group. And both of those groups were in support of the draft plan as you see it. This will be before the City Council on January 22. We are seeking a recommendation of the Planning Commission, and I'd certainly stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. That was a very, very good presentation. I think I live in center village, according to the first map, so I have to disclose that. But I just appreciate all the work that you've done on this and others have done. I know, I think that seems to me like we've gone from zero to 60 on this, on this plan. And it's looking good to me. So council members, questions for Ms. Dean? Commissioners, sorry, I was chairing a different council. I'm going to start getting texts about that. Commissioners, not council members, yeah. Commissioner Benke.
Thank you. But Gina, I was struck here that, well, let me start with this. I've been visiting some places lately out of our area. And it's been amazing when I've gone to a place that has, that has a walkable solution. Portland, I was there a number of years ago. Even Dallas, believe it or not. There are a couple of different areas where I've been down there where, you know, the mixed use and the walkability has really changed what you would expect a suburban area to have. There's a whole area in Plano that is virtually what we're talking about doing here. We were down there one Thanksgiving and we went to the tree lighting in Addison. And it, the amount of lights rivaled ours. But, you know, the other things that happened around that, in that period just try to drive how well it can work. Clearly, the climate's a little different, but it was still, it was still stuck in my head, obviously. I'm encouraged that the land bridge concept is still here. I hope that they continue to try to integrate it in a way that feels less like a bridge and more as an underpass. You know, the whole mixed use thing, I think, is obviously something that we are gaining experience with. And the realization of it is always going to be a question. So, you know, that's, how do we do that? And that's more of an open question than anything else. I think the whole idea of the alternative transportation throws a wrench into this that makes it very hard to think through yet because so much of that is not nailed down. How it will actually work, what will work here, what? This is something that's going to change over the next five years even while we're doing this. What I was sort of getting at is it appeared that some of the sketches sort of left marketplace out, yet on this page, it's highlighted in red. And obviously, that's a facility with significant vacant property as well.
So I can speak specifically to this property. And that did come up through our Economic Development Commission, one of the comments. Why is this, why is it not incorporated really in the vision? It kind of stands as is. The property owner wasn't really excited about the idea of adding additional changes to their property. So we're being sensitive to that. We do, however, know that there are those two vacancies. And this could still be an opportunity site. You know, tomorrow, the idea could change and they could want to do mixed use or someone knocks on their door. And we'll certainly work with them to help incorporate the ideas of the vision into this. I see this as a, Aldrich has a great spine. And, you know, maybe this could be a cool Main Street kind of feel at some point. That's just my, you know, random idea. But we're willing to work with property owners on the vision. Things will change. This isn't set in stone. We do anticipate that this will evolve over time. And as we have those conversations with the property owners, things will change. This will be updated. And we have those opportunities to work with the details when we get to the zoning implementation and.
Right, oh, absolutely. I mean, and even what you just said, where it's incorporated just in a different fashion, you know? I could see that perhaps helping them see where it could help their lot. You know, the money, you know, it's easy to look at those numbers and realize it's a lot. But, you know, I think you're absolutely right. It's an investment. lot, but, you know, I think you're absolutely right, it's an investment in infrastructure. It has impact on the community way beyond just what it coming out of somebody's pocket, because obviously it comes back in in terms of construction and other benefits and the taxes, and I think it's very, going to be very critical for people to understand that there are many, many funding sources that are going to contribute to that. It isn't just something that the citizens of Burnsville are going to be expected to Yeah, I guess my last little note to myself comes back to Marketplace again, where, you know, I do think that the landowners are going to realize an opportunity for, for the existing, what's existing there to improve their density and improve their value to them and to the city. So, you know, I think this is a really great direction. It's going to be interesting to see how it goes from here, it's really fun to be seeing it on the front side. Hope we're around to see it on the back.
Thank you.
Commissioners, additional comments, questions?
Just a comment, I guess we could throw off the one slide that said, "Final Draft."
Oh, there's still some, well, there's still some minor changes.
We joked about that earlier. I really hope they're serious about the walkway crossing 42. That's kind of the buzz of when I talk to people of how they, you know, everybody's talking about this area and what it could be, and the excitement of it. You know, numbers are huge, but they never were going to be small, and, but that one little aspect of what people talk about was a big deal, how they were going to make it happen. Now, the construct of the whole thing is going to be pretty cool to watch it happen, but if they keep that in mind, I think that's a connection that if you don't have is going to, I don't want, it's not a game changer, or changer, it's not a game-ender, but it's definitely a game-changer of what this can all look like or become. I don't see Top Golf in this at all.
That was a big part of the discussion.
I noticed that wasn't in the plan so far, but understanding it's not Final Draft will I.
Right, right, right.
Still hope.
We'll keep pushing that a little bit, yeah.
I'll work on it, I'll work on it.
Yeah, and I think as long as I can tell my son the option of a soccer field is possible, we're okay. I like it, it's a lot of work put into there. Nice.
Commissioner Benke.
You know, one, just to sort of, you know, there's always the aspect of doing nothing has a cost as well.
Yes.
And people need to remember that, you know, that, that drain is money that doesn't really help anybody. So, you know, what, what we're trying to do here, I think, just really helps turn the city of Burnsville around, so.
So, we actually do need a motion for a recommendation of approval, if that's the will of the commission.
I would make the motion.
At nine o'clock.
I've got one more question.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Anderson.
This document going to be proofread one more time? Because there are a lot of typos and misspellings and...
You can send additional comments to me.
Okay.
We'd certainly appreciate them as soon as possible, because we're having our consultant incorporate those prior to council, so if you can get them to me by midweek. We have had staff taking additional runs at it as well and provide additional comment, but if you have anything that you want to pass along, get that to me.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure second? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion recommending approval from the Planning Commission before the document is presented to the City Council.
It's been moved and prematurely seconded, but any discussion?
He started his motion. I was just catching up.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Did you say January 22nd?
It's a January 22nd, I agree, for the council. All right, that leaves us at item number six, updates. Anything new and exciting? Ms. Garros.
Well, in addition to Regina becoming a redevelopment planner, she will also be focusing on Heart of the City as well. But we have also promoted Sarah Arnold, our planning assistant, to planner, so she will be starting to come in. I think a lot of you have probably talked to Sarah on the phone, but we're really excited to have her. And we do have a position that, if it's not been posted, will be soon.
It's been posted, and I think it closes towards the end of the month for our Community Development Assistant, so supporting planning, community development, and economic development as well. So if you know of anybody, send them our way.
There's been a real change, I think, in direction, supported by the City Council, to really provide more resources and focus on economic development, so, kind of, looking forward to do that. Other than that, we just have your agenda for next time.
Agenda for January 28th. Commissioners, anything, any updates from any of us?
Yep.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you all.